Good evening, I'd like to call to order the May 6th Lansing City Council meeting. Clerk Swope, will you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Present.
Councilmember Pallavani-Glu.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
There are eight members present at quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, does anyone from council have anybody at this time they'd like to be remembered? Okay, seeing none from... Councilman Cost.
Yeah, since there is a event going on outside here, I would like to remember the fallen officers that died during duty, both firefighters and police and EMT.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Councilman, I was gonna mention that also, that's going on right now, the cops memorial. I also would like us to keep in mind a woman named Sandy Kingsley, they're DeWitt residents, ironically, her and her husband, but she and her husband were very involved in Lansing for many, many years, and I know that their family's hurting, so I hope we will keep their family in mind as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Shore. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, just the family of the young man that was killed, that was 14-year-old, just about a mile away from here on West Oakland Street in the west side of Lansing. Obviously, any time that someone's killed by a gun is terrible, but they, as young as 14, right here, a mile away, is equally, I mean, more devastating, so to their family and people affected by that.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Okay, let's rise for a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You have for approval the proceedings of April 15th.
Vice President Hussein.
I would move the minutes from April 15th, 2024, as present.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place, do we have any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passed.
And we are to special ceremonies and presentations, our first is a tribute and recognition of Against All Odds Foundation's anniversary.
Okay, thank you, do we have any members from that that'd like to come down to the well? Okay, Vice President Hussein.
All right, well what a pleasure, this is my first time actually being able to be down here and presenting this, so I'm pretty excited. I'm gonna read from the resolution, then adopt it, and then we'll let you say a few words, okay? It says, "Whereas Against All Odds Foundation is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) breast cancer organization dedicated to providing emotional and educational support services for African-American women of all ages and all stages of breast cancer, along with their families, encouraging them to reclaim their lives. And whereas, according to the National Breast Cancer Website, one in every eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime and is the most common cancer amongst women worldwide. And whereas, Against All Odds Foundation hosts fundraising events such as the Special Mother's Day brunch to help benefit these strong women in need. And whereas, Against All Odds Foundation has dedicated their website for women to share special stories of hope and spread positive words of encouragement to other women no matter where they are in life or in their stages of breast cancer. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lansing City Council hereby recognizes the 24th anniversary of Against All Odds Foundation's Special Mother's Day brunch to further support women, empowering women, sharing knowledge, hope, and encouragement, and that there is a life after breast cancer diagnosis." And with that, I would move the resolution.
Thank you, we have a proper motion in place, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, and you can make that correction for me.
Okay, I will do so. Thank you so much, and just one correction, 25 years as a nonprofit in the city of Lansing serving African-American women and their families, as well as the underserved community. We will be having a gala on May 11th to support all the survivors, we have 27 survivors that we're honoring at this gala at the Doubletree Hotel. So, anyone that's listening, wanna come, we still have a few tickets left, and then mothers, we are celebrating Mother's Day as well, so we have a celebration weekend, May 11th and May 12th, both at the Doubletree Hotel, celebrating 25 years we're still standing.
You get two, you actually get two of these, I may actually be there for the gala, but in case I can't, I wanted to also thank you all for everything you're doing, I can't say it any better than the councilmen did, but your organization does such incredible work, and we appreciate it, and I know I go every year when I can. So, I'm not gonna read this, but I get to say everything they did, but then I get to do this, I get to say, "Now therefore, I, Andy Shore, Mayor of the City of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim May 11th, 2024, as Against All Odds Day in Lansing. I congratulate Against All Odds on 25 years of hard work and dedication, and I encourage all Lansing residents to support those fighting cancer alongside this wonderful foundation." That's for you, and congratulations.
All right, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Shore, and I have a seat reserved for you. And I just wanna thank council for your continued support, 'cause you guys have supported me over the 25 years, and either by taking out an ad or a special tribute, and this has been a wonderful ride for me for 25 years, and I pray that I can continue to do so. So, we just need the community's support, and I thank you for believing in what we do and serve in the community. These are some of my members with me here, we have Linda Crenshaw, we have Roser Jones, and this is my rock, my husband, Dewayne Powell. Yes, thank you.
Okay, we next have a tribute and recognition of the 55th Annual International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Professional Municipal Clerks Week.
Okay, do we have anybody here to be...all right, doesn't look like it, Vice President Hussein.
All right, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you so much, President Garza, I just wanted to applaud again, as the board liaison for downtown Lansing Inc., I had the opportunity to go to the grand reopening of the Middle Village, it was a great privilege and honor to see the community come together to support small business and all of the, you know, different groups that it takes to see that become successful. So, I also wanted to give a shout-out to Shakela Zoss, if I said it wrong, sorry, but with DLI for all the marketing and everything that she's been doing, and with Lake Trust, who was a sponsor, Liberty McPike, who has done so much to help inspire and empower the small businesses in the Middle Village, had an opportunity to speak to a few of them, and they just applauded her greatly, and, you know, it was very wonderful to see community working together, and there was even tears shed about the dedication and commitment that Liberty and Lake Trust had had to the group. So, just wanted to make that comment, and I was so grateful to be there, it was a wonderful ribbon-cutting along with Councilwoman Tamira Carter at large, thanks so much.
Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza, I wanted to mention that Bancroft Park, Friends of Bancroft Park will be having an event Friday, May 17th, from 4:00 to 8:00 at Stobers at 812 East Michigan Avenue, it is a fundraiser event, and if you're not familiar with what Bancroft Park is, it is a beautiful, natural park on the north end of town with wooded trails, and if you have not been there, I highly suggest that you come visit and join us at the four-hour fundraiser at Stobers on Michigan Avenue, May 17th, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, the first announcement is that we are having our next constituent contact meeting on southwest Lansing this Saturday, which is May 11th, 10:00 to 12:00 noon, that's at 5825 Wise Road, which is the Alfred Schmidt South Side Community Center, I want to thank in advance our public service director, Andrew Co. Patrick, who will be on hand to discuss, among other things, Waverly Road reconfiguration, and then some infrastructure projects that are forthcoming for the third ward this construction season. Also, I did want to announce that SWAG, the Southwest Action Group, typically meets on the first Tuesday of every month, 6 o'clock, at 2101 West Homes, which is the South Side Community Coalition, but due to tomorrow's election, we're gonna actually put that off until next week, so we will be meeting on May 14th at 6:00 PM, 2101 West Homes, and again, that is the Southwest Action Group at the South Side Community Coalition. And then I got a message earlier from two people that I just, I admire greatly, Mr. J. West and Claire Healy, with the Church Hill Downs Community Association, they are doing a fantastic job leading that group, but they have a number of events coming up that they want folks to be aware of, the first is they have their annual garage yard sale on Saturday, May 18th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and if folks aren't aware, this is a huge neighborhood with just a ton of involvement, so I think it'll be worth your time, Churchill Downs neighborhood is essentially west to Waverly, south to West Jolly, north to West Homes, and then east to Wayne Wright, so again, a very sizable neighborhood, lots of involvement, and they're doing a lot to get the word out and try to get people involved with this particular yard sale. Also, the Churchill Downs Community Association's annual picnic will be Wednesday, June 18th, that's from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at Wayne Wright Park under the pavilion, so come out and enjoy. And then they also are planning a back-to-school footrace with the name of fostering intergenerational connections with the CDCA community, date and time are not certain, probably at some point in August, but they wanted folks to make sure, or they wanted to make sure, to mention it early, so that some of the older folks can get their fitness worlds together and prepare to not be embarrassed against the young folks, so with that, thank you.
Thank you, do we have any additional comments by council? All right, I just have a couple shout-outs, one, first to the South Church of Nazarene, couple weekends ago, they did the I Love My City event, which they do every year, hosted a number of beautification projects in south Lansing, big group turned out, even though it was raining, and got a lot of beautification projects done, so big shout-out to you guys, keep doing what you're doing, much appreciated in south Lansing, and also, I want to give a shout-out to Mitch and Candy Rice, to see him in the audience, they hosted a second ward cleanup this last Saturday, and we had a handful of people there, Councilman Brown was there as well, so much appreciated, thank you for being good stewards of our community. With that, Clerk Swope.
Thank you, first I want to welcome our new intern for the next few months, Tyron Flowers in the back, so if you wanna wave, and Tyron will be helping people get signed in and helping us administer the council meetings, so welcome, Tyron, thank you for being here. And, oh, we do have an election tomorrow, it is election day, polls are open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM, I want to remind folks, if your normal voting place is school, because school is in session, we are not using any school buildings, so we did give you notice of where you should vote instead, if you want to vote at the polls, and if you aren't sure where that is, you can call us, you can call 311, or you can go to lansingvotes.gov, and we will get you to the correct location for that. We have about, we have over 8,500 voters who have a ballot in their hand or in their home that has not come back to us yet, so if you can get those to one of the drop boxes by 8:00 PM, we will count it as part of tomorrow's totals. Another alternative is you can take that ballot, if you've already marked it, you can take it to your polling place, and it can be converted to an election day ballot, and you can put that ballot into the tabulator then, or if you changed your mind about who you're voting for, or accidentally marked too many, you can also take it into the polling place and surrender it and get a fresh, new ballot to put into the tabulator, so still plenty of opportunity to vote tomorrow, so I hope everyone will turn out, and with that, we are to community event announcements, anyone in the audience, we'll give you up to one minute to tell us the details of your event.
Hi, Luna Brown, on Saturday, May 25th, from noon to 3:00, a place for us will be having a community discussion and picnic, we'll be discussing, addressing homelessness and the lack of safe shelters within greater Lansing's queer community, how that affects us and what we can do about it, everyone's welcome, families are free to come, we'll have snacks, probably some hot dogs and stuff, and we'll have some arts and crafts for the kids or whoever, so feel free to come, thanks. Oh, and that's at Hunter Park, thank you.
Luna, what time is that, I know you said it's 8:25?
Noon to 3:00 on the 25th, and that'll be at the Hunter Park Pavilion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other community events?
The Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemetery will be holding its annual geranium giveaway again this month, we have moved the location this year, instead of being at the entrance, to Evergreen Cemetery, on Saturday, May 18th, from 10:00 to 2:00, we will be at the cemetery courtesy office at 1709 East Mount Hope Avenue, we'll have free seed geraniums, up to four per family, and they can be used to plant on graves in the three city-owned cemeteries, Evergreen, North, and Mount Hope, and just as an aside for the Bancroft Park, that also includes the remnant of the Mason Esker, so, thank you.
Thank you, other community events? All right, seeing none, oh, got one more, all right, come on down.
So, May 15th is our next Lansing 360 meeting, it's at noon, anybody can find the information on the Lansing Empowerment Network Facebook page or lansingempowermentnetwork.org for our Zoom link to get into the meeting. Right now, with everything going on in the community, obviously, the 14-year-old being killed, everybody's kinda, I've gotten phone calls all day from people, "How can I get involved?", there's probably four or five nonprofits getting started right now, we really gotta have a combined effort towards this problem, it's really not anybody's fault at this point, it's gotta be all of our job to get this done, and I'm hoping that people take this serious, this is just way too many situations, and a 14-year-old dying, and from what we're hearing, a 13-year-old doing the murdering, this has just gotta stop. With that being said, also, May 8th, this Wednesday, I've sent out an email to most of you all who have been already involved in Lansing 360 for some portion or not, and the mayor also would love to get you involved, we have an informational meeting for our trip to Omaha, to actually be involved in the rebuilding the village conversation out there, so it's Wednesday, it's a Zoom, also, I've sent it out an email, don't know how to get it to you, but I'll have one of them send it to you if possible.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right, seeing none, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, so that is the blue sheet in the back, and legislative matters includes items 5 through, all the way up through 23 on the printed agenda, so items 5 through 23, and we'll give you about another minute to go up and introduce yourself to Tyron and get signed in, and in the meantime, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a few quick things, first, I want to congratulate the Lansing Symphony Orchestra headquartered right in our downtown, they had a wonderful music of Star Wars, and I've never seen so many, I would say, kids, but really, it was not just kids, so many Lansing area residents having so much fun, it was a lot of fun. I want to thank the Lansing Airport and Bob Hoffman for their day of kindness, what a wonderful event at the airport, talking about all the incredible kindness thing going on in our community. The Middle Village grand opening, as the councilman mentioned, was wonderful, we have a whole new cohort of folks, if you have not been to Middle Village, it's moved, it's in the atrium building, if you haven't been in the atrium building, it's gorgeous building, a lot of folks haven't gotten in there, go in, check it out, and we have lots of incredible new small businesses, and as folks here know, from the last three cohorts, we've had many of them come out and actually have storefronts on, in our downtown, so it's exciting, and we're looking forward to the next round of folks. I want to thank the United Way, great event today, Women United, it was a wonderful event, Councilwoman Carter was there, and we heard some great commentary, if you haven't been to Everything is Cheesecake, they brought some cookies, and I know I got a cheesecake there for my son for his birthday, and it was fantastic, so I know Councilman Garza, I think that's in your ward, and you probably get there from time to time, but fantastic, I know, amen, so, and Kelly Ellison-Etchison was fantastic, so that's what I've got, also, you ran through real quick, but for Professional Municipal Clerks Week, we thought we would do something fun and do a proclamation for our city clerk, Chris Swope, I don't know if you've ever gotten one of these before, but we want to honor you for Professional Municipal Clerks Week, so I have a proclamation for you that talks about all the incredible things you do, but I'm not gonna take too much time, but I get to say, "Now therefore, I, Andy Shore, Mayor of the City of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim today, May 6th, 2024, as Clerk Chris Swope Day in Lansing," so I'm gonna give this to you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, with that, we are to public comment on legislative matters, which includes, as I said, items 5 through 23, and items 5 and 6 are public hearings, item 5 is the city budget for fiscal year 2425, and item 6 is the special assessment for Glenburn Commons. Do you want to overview of them?
Yeah, Vice President Hussein.
Okay, so as it pertains to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, the recommended budget that is before us does cover the period of time that runs from July 1st through June 30th of 2025, the all-funds budget is proposed at 297.3 million, which is a 3.6% increase from the fiscal year 2024 adopted budget, and the proposed general fund budget is proposed at $165.1 million, which is a 2.4% increase over the fiscal year 2024 adopted budget. Just a few of the highlights in terms of funded programs, position services, and the like, this does reflect a cadet program in the fire department to train new firefighters and paramedics, to expand on our capacity to hire externally, $300,000 in general fund to continue the advanced peace program, $260,000 for two new firefighters, $150,000 for annual firefighter medical exams, $80,000 for MCO promotion and testing services in the police department, we had a little bit of conversation during committee of the whole with regard to the public safety revenue sharing legislation, should that actually be passed, my understanding is we'd be projected to receive about $3.5 million, that would allow us to then hire 15 new officers, Lansing Police Department officers, a crime analyst, a camera technician, in addition to funding for non-police violent reduction services. Just a few other highlights, this does include an additional arborist to better maintain our rights of way in Parks and Forestry Division, an additional two solid waste operators, $2.35 million for the Federal Surface Transportation Program, 9.7, really a historic, $9.7 million into capital improvements for our major streets, continued combined sanitary and stormwater, stormwater sewer separations, $700,000 for new sidewalks, sidewalk repairs, sidewalk gap closures and trailways, $750,000 for construction maintenance, signage and engineering costs within our parking system, and then also allows us to maintain two full-time staff for sustainability, with the general fund operating budget increasing to a total of $100,000 for sustainability efforts, not including staffing being provided by Bloomberg Philanthropies, as well as significant grant funding, not part of the annual budget adoption and enterprise fund investments. And then I would just remind folks that we have another opportunity for public comment this Wednesday, which is May 8th at 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM, at the Alfred Schmidt South Side Community Center at 5825 Wise Road, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you, this is a public hearing for a special assessment on the Glenborne Commons trash and grass abatement, essentially, Glenborne Commons is a living complex that has a common area that the city of Lansing for many years has maintained, and instead of trying to build everybody separately that lives there, they do a special assessment that is equivalent to the amount of $47.40 a year per household, and that's been going on for a number of years, and this is part of the process for a special assessment, which includes a public hearing today, so if anybody wants to talk on that, it's part of it, and that is the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no one signed in to speak under legislative matters, so we are to the referral of the public hearings, the budget?
That would be the committee of the whole of May 8th at 6:00 PM? No, I'm sorry. All right, the committee of the whole, the following committee of the whole.
Okay, and item 6, the Glenborne Commons Special Assessment.
City operations.
All right, then we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Hussein.
All right, so we already, we took care of item 7, so that leaves us a balance of number 8, this is a tribute and recognition of the 55th Annual International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Professional Municipal Clerks Week, we have a resolution that pertains to various reappointments to boards and commissions, we have number 10, which is a fireworks display license resolution for Lansing Lugnuts and Pyrotechnico Fireworks, Inc. at Jacksonfield for multiple dates, number 11 is a fireworks display license resolution for same company, Pyrotechnico Fireworks, Inc. at Oak Park on the 4th of July, number 12 is a resolution for a noise special permit for MDOT request to allow for work activities to take place on I-496/US-127, we have number 13, which is a resolution for a noise special permit for Hoffman Brothers request to allow for the Michigan Avenue reconstruction project, we also have a liquor license transfer resolution in front of us, this is for a request by Forever Friendship, Inc. for a transfer of a Class C liquor license, an SDM permit from Tannen LLC, we have a hazard mitigation plan 2024 resolution, number 16 is a workers' compensation settlement claim, number WC, or letter WC 2062876-01987-001, we have a grant acceptance, Bloomberg Philanthropies Youth Climate Action Fund, we have another grant acceptance from the MEDC Revitalization and Placemaking 2.0 program, also known as RAP, and then we also have a state disaster contingency fund reimbursement resolution, so with that, and again, that's items 8 through 19, I would move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place, do you have any questions, concerns from council? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to item 20, the appointment of Irene Cotton to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Councilman Cost.
Yes, so, we met Pastor Cotton at our last public safety meeting, we had discussed her past, she does substantial things within the community, she's been part of the prison ministry, she retired from General Motors in 1997, she has attended Lansing Public Schools, grew up here, lived here, we asked if she had time to do the commission, that's always a big question for me, she did state that she had the time, and she was willing to serve, she told us that she believed in accountability and transparency, and she wants to serve Lansing, so with that, I would move the appointment of Irene Cotton.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place, do we have any comments, concerns? Vice President Hussein.
Is Ms. Cotton here tonight?
Yes, she is.
Okay, so I watched back the committee, my only concern, I'm not on the committee, but I did watch the interview, my only concern is that you stated that Tuesdays were really bad, and our police commission meetings are actually Tuesday evenings at 5:30 PM, it's every third Tuesday. It's every third Tuesday. And they typically alternate between the police headquarters and, and any one of our various community centers. And so I just want to make sure that, because you specifically in that interview said Tuesdays are just a bad evening, that you would be able to fulfill that commitment, that third Tuesday of every month. Okay, all right.
Okay, any?
It's pointed out that the city TV is showing a different meeting.
Oh, wow, nice.
Somebody back in the control room?
There it is.
Okay.
Okay, so we, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? All right, seeing no further. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes.
If you want to come on down and bring your people and get sworn in, come right up to the mic here. Step right up to the mic. You're all fan out behind her, it's over love.
Yes.
If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
As the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As a member of the Board of Police Commissioners.
As a member of the Board of Police Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Mayor, for appointment, this appointment. And I think that, I just wanted to say that this is a very pivotal moment for me in my life. And I do believe that it's a privilege and an opportunity to be able to serve this community in Lansing, a place where I have grown up and come to this place in this period in my life. So I want to be able to speak for the, for our community, for the people that really don't have a voice. So I want to be that voice that can bring situations and circumstances back to this city council. So thank you.
All right, we'll keep the show rolling. So we are to setting a show cause hearing to make, orders to make safer demolish the owners of 1115 Regent Street. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. So the Committee on Public Safety met on 4/23 and approved this show cause hearing. This house is 1115 Regent Street. The SEV is $47,000. It looks like it was originally red-tagged, 8/4 of 2009. There's been one permit hold issued 2/1 of '24. I believe that there was a new owner at some point in the last couple of months on this property, a Casey Howard. They did not show up, so I would note on your sheet that we have in front of us, the date for the approve, the show cause hearing is actually 5/6, not 5/8. So I would move to a show cause hearing for 5/13.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, comments from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
And next we have Item 22, Claim Disposition for 1110 Bench Street.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. This is a claim appeal for, it was, what was ultimately, I believe, a refrigerator that got picked up. So originally, the refrigerator was at the side of the street. And according to our code officers, they gave her a notice that was sent to the Treasury Department, because that was the address on file, and put at the house. The house the respondent does not live in. She said that she purchased the house. It was trashy. She's been working to clean it up. When the code came back to enforce, they noticed that the refrigerator was not in the front, but in, now in the back of the house. So it was moved. The respondent came in to the first appeal before it got to our committee. And I believe that, oh, by the way, this amount that says 375, I think is a different amount than what's on our resolution.
640.
That says 640. And that's because she initially came in and the Claim Appeal Committee agreed to reduce the amount because they charged, seemed like, I don't know how much it was, for just removing one refrigerator. So that's what was set in. And then she comes to appeal because she doesn't think she should pay anything. And she listed her reasons why, being that she said she didn't get notice. But then the committee said, well, it was moved, so you probably did get notice. And back and forth. Ultimately, I'll tell you about the vote in a second. But that's how it went from, instead of 375, since she appealed, it went back to the original $640. So that's where I believe it stands today, despite what's on our agenda is proper on our resolution. So she came in. We ended up discussing in committee and voting it against her 2 to 1. She does not appear to be here today. And I would move the resolution. I would like to make an amendment. Is it now the time?
Typically, we'd like to see it in writing.
I mean, I guess just, you know, the amount to go back. I want to put that out there.
The amount to go back to 640?
No, it's actually, should be, it's at 640, but to go back to 375.
So that's amendment you want to make?
I do.
Okay.
What's the rationale?
Councilman Spatafor.
I heard the explanation. What's the rationale for that?
So it was originally reduced to that amount once the Claim Committee review determined that it was an excessive amount billed for just the removal of the refrigerator. But then she appealed the whole thing, which took it away from that. So nothing would change that still being an excessive amount. But she just decided that she wanted to appeal the whole thing. I would still say it would be an excessive amount, therefore we should reduce it to what the original finding of the claim appeal was.
Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, so in committee, this was not an excessive amount. As a matter of fact, this is the least you can be charged for this type of removal. The Claims Review Committee listened to this and they decided to waive the $250 administrative fee. As we vetted this, we determined that we didn't honestly agree with the Claims Review Committee, that all of the typical work that happens administratively did happen. There was cost incurred by the city. And we did not see fit that the taxpayers of the City of Lansing pay for the removal of the refrigerator nor the administrative costs of actually enforcing that part of our code. And so, again, this is actually the lowest amount that somebody can be charged for this type of removal from a property.
Okay, thank you. So just keep this clean. Oh, Councilman Brown.
So I'm hearing two different things. I'm just trying to understand the 375 was, based on what you're indicating, was below cost?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Cost, but I believe they waived the administrative fee, correct?
Correct.
Correct. The Claims Review Committee did. And in all communication with this particular claim, it was made very, very clear that if you decide to not accept essentially the CRC decision, then what's going before the committee, right? And ultimately, this body is the entire amount. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion for amendment, for approval of it. In part. So we'll vote on to, see if we're going to approve Councilman Jackson's amendment to this, and then we'll vote on it. Is that clear? Okay, so all those in favor to approve the amended resolution, say aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion fails. Okay, now we have a, on the original amount of $640. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes.
Okay. Item 23, the appointment of Gregory S. Venker as city attorney.
Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, sure. So as folks know, recently, Mr. Jim Smearka did resign as city attorney. Our administration brought forth a, or I shouldn't say brought forth, actually appointed Mr. Greg Venker as the interim city attorney. And then quite quickly thereafter, brought forth a resolution appointing him as the permanent city attorney. We took that resolution up on April 8th. There was, at that time, some concern, I think, about, you know, folks not having necessarily appropriate amount of time to sit down with Greg, to have conversations about, you know, his vision for the office, his capacity to carry that vision out. And so we, at that time, had actually asked the administration to bring forth a resolution of interim status. They did that. We vetted that on the 15th. The date that was actually baked into that resolution was May 6th. So that's why we are now looking at this resolution of permanent appointment. My understanding is that folks have now had an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Venker, ask those questions, address those concerns. And so with that, I would move the resolution of appointment for Mr. Gregory Venker as the city attorney.
All right, thank you. We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments, questions from council? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Congratulations, Greg.
All right. Thank you.
We, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. So we'll give you about another minute to get up and check in with Tyron if you wish to. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Hussein.
Yep, I would move that. All items be considered as read in full and that the appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Nonprofit recognition KPS Special Olympics Golf Classic.
City Operations.
General fund status report for the third quarter.
Committee of the Whole and internal auditor.
From the mayor, authorizing the Public Service Director to apply for state highway rights of way.
City Operations.
Sole source purchase Parks and Recreation Department request for PSFA turf tax for the replacement of the turf at Beacon Field.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
And a workers' compensation settlement.
Ways and Means, internal auditor.
Joint appointment, Communications and Petitions, joint appointment of Becky Pena as a member of the Ingham County City of Lansing Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Public Safety.
And a communication from Sheila Contreras supposing the Martin Luther King Boulevard reconfiguration.
Place on file.
We are true remarks by council members.
Do we have any additional remarks from council? Vice President Hussein.
Just real quick, and I apologize. I meant to say this. Councilman Garza did touch on this, but specifically when, you know, when we talk about the South Church of the Nazarene and this annual effort, they do a number of projects throughout the community. One of the things that I hear about as Ward Representative Southwest Lansing, every year, all year, is the trash at Edgewood Boulevard. And they, they make it, we don't even have to ask at this point. They just make it part of their annual exercise to get out there, particularly from Georgetown to South Washington. And I don't know what they do, because there are, I mean, just yards and yards of trash out there. And it seems like they have it picked up, you know, in the blink of an eye. So I wanted to thank them for that. I've had a number of people call and thank me, and I've made sure to tell everybody I had nothing to do with it. And I never do, frankly. It's, it's this group, this fantastic group that gets out. They quietly do the work, not for a pat on the back. But I wanted to publicly recognize them, even though they probably won't want that public recognition. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Hussein. Any additional remarks from council? Okay, seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor?
Congrats to Greg Venker. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, with that, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. Our first speaker is David Ellis, followed by Mitch Rice. Each speaker has up to three minutes to address council.
Hi, David Ellis, resident of downtown Lansing. And I would like to ask city council and the mayor to urge the state of Michigan to consider ceding back some of their surface parking lots to the residents of Lansing. I know this is a bit of an odd one, but I was wanting to know exactly how much of their surface parking lots between Ottawa and Kalamazoo Street they use. So I went down there during the busiest time of the year for them, which is their budget season. And I counted all of the cars parked in all of the surface parking lots five different times to get the busiest count I could. And of the 2,835 available parking spaces, the most that were ever occupied was 1,216, which is 42.9% occupancy of their parking spaces at the busiest time of year for them. Back in the 1960s through 80s, progressively over those two decades, the state of, okay then. The state of Michigan had taken 27.6 acres of some of Lansing's most productive residential land. Hundreds of homes were bulldozed and people were displaced to make room for a parking lot that is 57% empty at its most full. I'd like to see the state of Michigan give back approximately half of that land. This would be about 10.6 acres of land, which would leave them with still 13.5% more capacity than they will ever need. This is enough room for the state of, for, with current, like, building rates, middle density of 300 to 500 residential units to be given back to Lansing residents. That is thousands of residents back living downtown. This is an enormous rejuvenation of our downtown neighborhood. And for, since we're entering our own budget season, I might want to add that this would generate roughly $1.6 million per year in tax revenue for the City of Lansing. This is an incredible, incredible opportunity that is just sitting completely unutilized. This is currently land that no one parks on, that no one lives on. No jobs are there. There is no tax revenue created. It is nothing. It is some of our best, most opportunistic land in the entire city, and it is going to waste. I know the state of Michigan has some of their own plans for wanting a park that is fantastic. I would love to see a park downtown. But we are not, we are the seat of the state government. We are not here for them to sit on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mitch Rice, and then Luna Brown.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I wanted to recognize the recent cleanup efforts on the South Side Ward 2 and 3. In early April, the Southwest Action Group, also known as SWAG, had a big cleanup in the Holmes and Pleasant Grove area. Last, and the last Sunday of April, the South Church of the Nazarene did cleanup and beautification in South Lansing at various areas. And I organized a cleanup this past Saturday in the area of Edgewood and South Cedar. I encourage all city residents to join in when and where you can to keep cleaning up our city. This results in developing more community and pride in the City of Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Luna Brown, and then Loretta Stanaway.
Hi, I'm Luna. I'd like to talk about an under-recognized landmark in this city. This landmark is beloved by many Lansing residents. It's a symbol of strength and a uniting factor for Lansing residents that transcends political affiliations, race, creed, all those things. Of course, I'm talking about the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge. I really think the city needs to recognize its landmarks more, and this is very beloved by many of our citizens, and I think it's time we get a sign for the bridge that has, like, days since last collision on it, and it can change, you know? Every time there's a collision, we can reset the clock, and if you really want to invest in this, you can even put, like, a record on the bottom to put the record number of days since the last collision. So this project's really important to me, I would love to see some movement in recognizing one of Lansing's favorite landmarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Norma Bauer.
As you consider the budget, when he came in this evening to present his proposed budget, I spoke briefly to the police chief and asked him if his budget included a proposal to move towards going toward reserve police officers, and he quickly dismissed the idea and just basically acted like it was nothing he would ever consider, but I think you should. There are a lot of places in this country that have gone to and do use reserve police officers. It is not undoable, it is not undoable under the Mike Michigan Coles Regulations and Administration Rules, or whatever it is. Jackson has recently gone to reserve officers, Ingham County used to have reserve officers, but let's see, in San Diego, in the city of San Diego, they have reserve officers. In the county of San Diego, they have reserve officers. Those reserve officers can be at three different levels of skill sets and tasks that they're allowed to do, all the way up to functioning with another officer in full capacity, and starting all the way down at the bottom of the ladder, doing traffic stops, doing parking citations, doing parade and special event, security duty, et cetera. San Diego's volunteer reserves are considered to be the finest in the world. There is no reason, other than just fear and misinformation, that we could not look at doing reserve officers. This would save a lot of time and energy and effort for the actual patrol officers, it would save us money, and it would take us out of the inability to even stop a kid on a bike that's running red lights and just, you know, being completely reckless. We have far too many quality of life issues in this city that aren't able to be addressed because our police staff is insufficient. This is an option, and we need to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, tonight is Norma Bauer.
Thank you all for the work that you're doing and showing up, and I also want to give a thank you to the Public Safety Advisor Ad Hoc Committee of this council, because Ryan Tamara, Tamira, and Peter, I guess, are doing a good job, and they're really keeping an eye on our red-tagged houses, and it's really progressive. And I also want to say that there was a proclamation that Nation Outside presented to you about Fair Chance Housing, I think it was, and I don't know that we've ever had a recognition about that. You recognize the cancer people and maybe the Juneteenth people, but not that proclamation, so I'd like to find out where that's going sometime. And the other thing, I want to talk to my second ward council member, because I appreciate what other volunteers are doing to help clean up other messed up areas of the city, like SWAG at Pleasant Grove and Homes, and they got the city's cooperation, and it was very effective, and the business owners in that area are appreciative of the work that they did to clean up that private parking lot, and the businesses appreciated it, they went kitty corner across the street and cleaned up where MLK went to school, and the north, I don't remember which corner it is, but anyway, the Walgreens at the corner of South Cedar and Lansing is part of a strip mall, and it's a mess, a filthy mess, and it lives down to all of the things that people already think about South Lansing. So I was hoping that our council representative in Ward 2 would arrange for the city to do that. He said he would talk to the business owners about it. Why would business owners object to having an army of volunteers, well-intentioned volunteers, clean up a mess? That doesn't make sense to me. So I hope that you all agree with me that we need to have the city's help on that. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.